That the outcome of this is to ban brass knuckles. I also hope I can encourage other teens to come forward and help the community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Connor. We appreciate you being here and we always encourage everyone to speak here, but it is so great to hear from our youth directly. So we appreciate your email and we appreciate you being here tonight. And on behalf of the mayor and the council, good luck at your volleyball tryouts this evening. And thanks for, I know it's a balance, trying to balance all the things. So you're doing the right things and you're doing things that are important and are making a difference. So thank you for being here. I have another comment and I will have that, it's not specific to an agenda item, so I'll have that a little bit later on our agenda. But I do appreciate everyone being here and showing your support for Preston and all those involved in teen violence and your commitment to a positive change for our youth. We'll continue to have these important conversations. We'll continue to show our youth that violence will not be tolerated and we will continue to celebrate kindness. As we continue to focus on justice for Preston, we must acknowledge the outstanding young men and young women we have in our community and in our region. We've heard from one this evening. And these hateful acts cannot overshadow the good that we have in our community and the great youth that we have. And so with that, I appreciate the time this evening and we will move to our next item on the agenda. We have several ceremonial matters. And the next one I will read also saddens me, but it's necessary to talk about as well and to remind, good luck Connor. And to remind that all forms of violence are absolutely unacceptable, especially when it involves our youth. Nearly one in 12 high school students in the U.S. have experienced dating violence. Violence, intimidation, and fear, whether perpetrated in person or online, can upend the lives of young people during some of their most formative years and have lifelong consequences. Survivors of teen dating violence are more likely to suffer from symptoms of depression, anxiety, and trauma. There are tools and training available for educators, for families, and community members to reach out to our young people to show them how to form healthy relationships and safely leave abusive ones. This information can be found at vetoviolence.cdc.gov. We urge everyone to commit to building a future where our youth can live free from violence, fear, and abuse. Our next proclamation is in honor of school resource officers, which are such a critical component of our community placing strategy. We have several incredible SRO officers here with QCPD and build such positive relationships with our youth and we thank you for that. Councilmember McClure, can you please share remarks for our school officer proclamation?
I love you, Mayor. School resource officers create connections by providing a collaborative and safe learning environment where students and staff are able to foster positive relationships and effective problem-solving strategies. We appreciate the efforts made by these school resource officers in order to protect our schools and keep our children safe. School Resource Officer Appreciation Day is an opportunity to show our respect and support for local school resource officers. I'd urge all residents to join us in celebrating February 15th as School Resource Officer Appreciation Day.
Thank you, Councilmember McClure. And we have several of our fantastic school resource officers with us here this evening and I would love to invite them up to present them with those proclamations and if the council would join me. We do appreciate you. Thank you for being here this evening and thank you for all that you do for our youth. Next is a very exciting proclamation for me and having positive role models is so important. While playing a professional sport may feel like reaching for the stars, much less playing for the very top game in that sport, that is exactly what one young man from Queen Creek, let's set the record straight, from Queen Creek is doing. The next item on our agenda is recognizing Brock Purdy, a Queen Creek native, quarterback for the 49ers in playing in the Super Bowl this weekend. So with that, I would like to read our broclamation. Whereas the town of Queen Creek and the Queen Creek Town Council show great pride and admiration in Brock Purdy, current starting quarterback for the San Francisco 49ers football team. And whereas Brock Purdy grew up in Queen Creek, Arizona and participated in San Tan Youth Football League, a recreation partner of the town of Queen Creek. And whereas Mr. Purdy's dedication to excellence has resulted in a successful National Football League season, leading his team to participate in the upcoming Super Bowl on Sunday, February 11th, 2024 in Las Vegas, Nevada. And whereas Mr. Purdy has had an impact on local sports in the East Valley, having played high school football at Gilbert Perry High School and is set to be inducted into the Chandler Sports Hall of Fame in 2024. And whereas Mr. Purdy has demonstrated exceptional leadership both on and off the field, embodying the values of teamwork, integrity, and resilience, serving as an inspiration for aspiring young athletes. And whereas the town of Queen Creek is incredibly proud of all of its young residents and supports the dreams and accomplishments of every youth. Now therefore be it resolved that the town of Queen Creek recognizes the great skill of San Francisco 49ers quarterback Brock Purdy and wishes him great success in Super Bowl 58 on Sunday, February 11th, 2024. You got it. Incredibly exciting and I think you know who we'll be rooting for. Our next item is recognition of a proclamation that was issued last Saturday in honor of Black History Month. Councilmember Brown, would you please present this one?
Thank you, Mayor. Black History Month is an annual opportunity to recognize the central role that African-Americans play in the history of our nation. The national commemoration of Black History in the United States dates back to 1926. Black History Month was officially established in 1976 by President Gerald Ford, who called on the public to quote, "Seize the opportunity to honor the two often neglected accomplishments of Black Americans in every area of endeavor throughout our history," end quote. Several members of our town council were honored to celebrate with the reading of a Black History Month proclamation at the Black History Month Celebration hosted by Black Heritage Connection at Desert Mountain Park last Saturday, February 3rd. We encourage all Queen Creek residents to join in celebrating the contributions of African-Americans to our community, our state, and to our nation. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. We are extremely grateful for our service, men and women in Queen Creek. And I'm thankful we have the opportunity to recognize not only the individuals who are currently serving and whom have served, but also their loved ones who serve right alongside them. Vice Mayor Martino, would you please present our proclamation for Blue Star Mother's Day?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Blue Star Mothers of America was founded as a patriotic service organization in February of 1942 with the purpose of uniting mothers with sons or daughters in the United States Armed Forces. This organization received its charter from Congress on July 14th, 1960 and that has made countless contributions to American history. Blue Star Mothers pack and ship thousands of care packages every year to members of the armed forces deployed overseas. They volunteer to help homeless veterans, provide support for wounded warriors, visit the hospitals of veterans, honor fallen heroes during the funeral services, and offer a compassionate community for the mothers of men and women of the armed forces serving in harm's way. The Blue Star Mothers promoted the values of the United States demonstrates a patriotic spirit and advanced a national sense of pride and appreciation for the men and women for the armed forces. We recognize February 1st as Blue Star Mother's Day and wish to honor their sacrifice and service every day. We'd also like to recognize the service of all military family members and loved ones that sacrifices you make are truly extraordinary and we are so grateful for you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Martino. We have Bridget Crosby here and several members of the Queen Creek Blue Star Mothers and we'd like to recognize them for all their sacrifice and service. And if you would please step forward, I'd like to invite the council down to present this proclamation. Thank you for being here. Each year we recognize the International Mother Language Day. Councilmember Benning, would you please read this proclamation?
Thank you, Mayor. It's my honor to make this presentation. In 1999, the United Nations Educational, Scientific, and Cultural Organization proclaimed February 21st as International Mother Language Day to commemorate the martyrs who sacrificed their lives on February 21, 1952. UNESCO says that languages are the most powerful instruments of preserving and developing our tangible and intangible heritage. Multicultural diversity is one of the strengths of our community. And Queen Creek is home to many diverse languages, cultures, and heritages. The town of Queen Creek hereby proclaims February 21st as International Mother Language Day and we recognize this day to promote the preservation and protection of all languages used by peoples all around the world. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last proclamation of the evening, we have the great responsibility of promoting health within our community. So I'd like to ask Councilmember Oliphant to read our final proclamation this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. It's my honor to read our proclamation for Go Red for Women Month. Cardiovascular disease is the leading cause of death in women claiming more lives than all forms of cancer combined. Among females 20 years old and older, nearly 45% are living with some form of cardiovascular disease. Heart disease is the leading cause of maternal death in the U.S. Overall, 10 to 20% of women will have a health issue during pregnancy. Statistically, women are less likely than men to receive bystander CPR and are less likely to be involved in clinical trials. As of 2020, only 38% of cardiovascular clinical research trial participants were women. Since 2004, the American Heart Association Go Red for Women movement has addressed the awareness and clinical care gaps of women's greatest health threat. So I encourage all residents to raise awareness about cardiovascular disease, show their support by wearing red, and focus on their own health to prevent cardiovascular disease and events. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Oliphant. We appreciate that. Next, we will move on to our committee reports and I can tell where my January went because we have, I think, a couple screens of all the committees we have attended. And is there anyone that wishes to comment on any of the items listed on the committee report? Okay, seeing none, hearing none, we will move on to committee and outside agency reports. We do have a report from the Economic Development Commission, the January 24th meeting. Councilmember Brown, if you would please provide us with that update.
Certainly, Mayor. The Economic Development Commission met Wednesday, January 24th. Jennifer Lindley, Downtown Development Manager, presented the Town Center Downtown Core Plan Updates Key Priorities. Jen also provided an overview of the facade improvement program and plans to sunset that program at the end of the fiscal year. The commission provided feedback on the 2022 Economic Development Summit and ideas for the 2024 summit. Staff provided an overview of projects in the development pipeline, including LG Energy Solution, LGE Creations Mixed-Use Development. And the next meeting is scheduled for April 24th.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Brown. Next on the agenda is public comment, which pertains to items that are not on the published agenda. And I do have one public comment submitted in person today. Do we have additional public comment, either email, WebEx, or in person as well?
Mayor, we did receive a public comment through email and it will be attached to the official record.
Okay, thank you. We will proceed with Bridget Vega. If you would please come up and state your name and address for the record.
I just want to make a comment before we start my three minutes. Going forward, especially as the youth comes to speak and just for the safety of the youth in all of these cases, even as we just saw Connor speak, for the safety of the teens and the children, can we not ask their address for the safety of them, please? Everyone knew that Connor was speaking today. So Bridget Vega, 137 East Elliott Road, number 325, Gilbert, Arizona 85233. Good evening, Mayor and Town Council. I am Bridget, a mother, a mental health and human trafficking prevention advocate and assault survivor. I stand here to be a voice for the voiceless and speak for the children. Thank you, Connor, for your courageous voice. Change begins with awareness. When does it stop? When each and every single one of us have the courage to stop looking away and turning a blind eye. Gilbert has hosted two meetings and we have seen no presence from Queen Creek. If we can get the mayor, town council, chief of police, as we ask for you to join this conversation on teen violence with the Gilbert Teen Violence Subcommittee and the community. As we were told to wait for a thorough investigation, the children go to school feeling unseen, unheard, and unsafe and cannot be children. While they wonder as life goes on, where's the justice? Who is going to protect us? As they live in survival mode using coping mechanisms, the children are in communities every day and cross paths with teens who continue to continually get away with assault and murder. It's more than a hashtag, it's a child's life. It's been three months and one week since Preston Lord was brutally assaulted and murdered. As his family graciously and gracefully awaits for answers, justice, and a conviction. Remember, the children are watching and your silence is deafening. You've had that long to lead, act, and organize community gatherings. As the community is crying out and the children are suffering in silence, will you as leaders meet us as a community in the middle to bridge the gap, to create a safe environment for the children? Can we join as a partnership to have the town put on a CPR class? Have an awareness and prevention event? I will gladly help plan it and connect nonprofits such as Red Light Rebellion, that is Boots on the Ground, with the youth currently in trauma-informed training and prevention program addressing physical, emotional, spiritual health and the importance of digital safety and resilience. Remember the oaths that all of you took. It's never too late to do what's right. To the youth, to those that have reported prior but were silenced, you are courageous. I'm sorry for everything you've endured. I pray for healing and strength and protection as God continues to bring these stories to light. Please know, we're here for you, you are enough, your voice matters. We see you, we hear you, we stand by you, and we love you. Be an upstander and continue to keep the Lord family, the Jenkins, the Stevens, the Veas, the Jacobo family, and all of the youth in your prayers. We have no future if we don't protect the children. We have a duty to protect the innocent. If not, that blood is on our hands. If we can take a moment of silence for all the youth who've been assaulted mentally, physically, sexually, and for all the innocent souls of the children who were wrongfully murdered due to senseless acts of violence. Keep the youth along with their families in your prayers. Justice for the youth in Preston Lord if we can take a moment of silence.
Thank you. Thank you. We appreciate your comments, Ms. Vega. And I, due to state law, cannot comment to them, but we are listening, we are taking notes, and we appreciate you being here. Our next item on the agenda is our consent agenda. Are there any members of council or staff that would like to remove any items for separate discussion, presentation, or a separate vote?
Mayor, so that I might make an amended motion on item H. I'd like to have that pulled for separate.
Okay. I will entertain a motion A through G of our consent agenda.
Mayor, I move we approve items A through G on the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Oliphant, a second by Councilmember McClure. Please place your vote. That does pass unanimously and I will entertain a motion or discussion on item H.
Mayor, I don't need a presentation or discussion. Originally, I had proposed that we support Senate Bill 1183. And the amendment, though, that I'd like to offer at this time is to include just a little bit extra. When I had originally proposed the motion, it was not anticipating that other amendments might be offered at the state legislature. And so I'd like to recognize that. So my motion would be to move to approve support for the Strike Everything Amendment offered to Senate Bill 1183. Brass knuckles, prohibited weapons with an amendment limiting the prohibition to minors and/or, and/or, an amendment that would enhance the penalties for the use of brass knuckles in the commission of a crime.
We have a motion by Councilmember Brown.
Second.
Councilmember Padilla does have a comment or question?
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. First of all, I want to thank Connor Jarnigan for, I hope I got that right, Jarnigan, for coming to speak. That takes a lot of courage for a young man who was assaulted viciously like that. Listening to that, that, you know, could be one of my children that I have, I have teenagers, and thinking that someone could just come up them at a public location and just assault them and rob them like that, just infuriates me. It makes my blood boil. It makes me so mad. And also, I see the light in it because here's an individual who comes, who has something horrific happen, but he doesn't just huddle up in his room. He gets out and he does something about it. And how wonderful was that to see him? And I really appreciate him and his family coming to do that. Teen violence has been on our mind, of course, that's where this resolution comes from regarding the teen violence and just violence in general that we all want to curb. It is completely unacceptable in our community. We want to take every measure we can to ensure there's justice for all victims. And before I get into this resolution specifically, I just want to thank our Queen Creek Police Department. I can tell any members of the community that are questioning what is being done about teen violence is that that man over there, Chief Bryce, and the Queen Creek Police Department are on top of this. They are not resting. They will make sure that they do everything in their power to hold those accountable who need justice. And I really appreciate that. Regarding this specific resolution, here are my thoughts on this, Mayor. I deeply empathize with the brutality inflicted upon Connor or anyone else that has been the victim of having any object that could be used to assault them. And certainly, those that inflict those damages need to be brought to justice completely. Now regarding the prohibition of brass knuckles for minors, criminals, and I believe this resolution with the amendment specifically states that it should be for minors and/or increasing the penalties of those who use the brass knuckles in an assault, correct? So the issue that I have with it is that it's limiting for minors the defense tools available that minors might have to defend themselves. Now, we might ask ourselves, how often does it happen where brass knuckles are used, period? You know, I don't know that statistic. It doesn't seem very often, both for, you know, defense or for offense. And this case, we definitely saw how it was used for offense and that's a terrible thing. We want to prevent that and they should be brought to justice. But if we broaden the conversation a little bit, whether a minor chooses to use this or another tool, it is still limiting of the available tools that they have to defend themselves. So similar to mace or a blunt force object or a construction tool or a hammer, it is always the person behind the tool that is creating the wrong and not the tool itself. And in that respect, I would ask, should we prohibit all these other items as well? Now, if my teenage daughters, and I have several of them, and I greatly am concerned about their safety, if they're out after dark, as they often are, and they're in a parking lot where it's dark, or they come out of an activity, or they're out to eat at a fast food establishment, or at the Queen Creek Marketplace and they're attacked, I have made sure that my daughters are trained in self-defense to the best that they can. And I want them to have as many self-defense tools as possible for their defense, including whatever tools they may choose to use. There are some who put brass knuckles on a keychain. There are women who are afraid of violence or rape that want to make sure that they are defended properly, that they have the tools to stave off any offender that would come toward them. And what I don't want to do is put them in jeopardy of being able to protect themselves. So passing a ban for minors, in my mind, will enable criminals to continue to have the upper hand in a confrontation. Keep in mind that the biggest functionality of a self-defense tool is deterrence. If a criminal sees that a victim has a self-defense tool, they're less likely to attack in the first place. So without self-defense tools, we are asking minors, minor victims, to do the impossible, overcome an aggressive criminal who could have an assault weapon without a self-defense tool. It would be cruel to the victim to do so. And in support of them, I would not, I would not, for one, support banning or prohibiting minors to have any self-defense tool that they choose to use. As with all government intervention, we must always ask ourselves, what are the unintended consequences of our actions? It is easy to have knee-jerk reactions, and when we see an event that happens publicly, to say, we need to do something about it. But often, that something creates more problems in the future, which problems I think I've mentioned. We don't know what kind of self-defense tactics may evolve to assist victims to defend themselves. And I don't believe that we should limit their tools to be able to do so. So with that first comment on the conversation, I am all for ensuring that we hold accountable those who commit acts of violence. And County Attorney Rachel Mitchell today was asked specifically regarding the punishment. She addressed the media today about this very issue with brass knuckles. As she explained to a question, so first, we just dealt with the minor issues. Now I'm switching to the other side of the resolution, which is stiffening the penalties, essentially. As she explained to a question regarding brass knuckles, the current law as it stands today is that brass knuckles may cause additional harm to the victim, which currently enhances the assault from a misdemeanor to a felony, potentially Class III with automatic imprisonment or a Class IV felony. So the current law already does what this amendment is asking regarding enhancing the penalties for the use of brass knuckles in the commitment of a crime. So what I want to avoid is government getting involved and doing something just to feel like we're doing something, when in reality, those who attack with brass knuckles are already held and should be. And Rachel Mitchell mentioned today at her press conference that they will be held accountable and will have those higher-level charges brought against them because they did use the brass knuckles. So the system appears, in that case, to be working. And I don't see a need to add redundancy that could limit the self-defense tools of others who choose to defend themselves against crime. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I, too, watched Rachel Mitchell's, the county attorney's, press conference, and she seemed to indicate support for a ban on brass knuckle possession by minors. And with that, Mayor, I would call the vote.
And there is a motion, and there is a second. Thank you, Councilmember Bennings.
So, excuse me. As part of that, I would ask, I would ask to call a vote that we amend the amendment. And a vote on the amendment is that if we want to call for stiffer penalties, I'm all for that. But I would like to amend the prohibition of brass knuckles for minors and simply make this about stiffer penalties for those who use them for assault. And with that, I would like to call a vote to see if we could pass that resolution.
We need a second first. So there is a second motion made. If there's a second on that motion, we will call a vote.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
Mayor, I want to clarify. In order for Maria to take that down and for the council to understand what they're voting on, I think we need some clarity on exactly what the amendment is.
Yes, thank you. The clarity would be, and I can't find the language in front of me right now. The language to enhance the, to enhance the penalties for those who are found guilty of assaulting with brass knuckles, that part is what my wish is, the amendment that I'm calling for, that we vote on that without the prohibition of brass knuckles for minors.
So what you're proposing is that you support it without the amendment to limit it to minors and add?
That we remove the prohibition for minors to have brass knuckles so that they can properly defend themselves. So the victims can properly defend themselves.
Council, do you understand?
So Councilmember Brown's amendment was to add minors.
Well, I think his amendment was to add minors, add prohibition for minors, and to stiffen the penalties for those. And so there's two parts to it. I'm simply stating, my amendment to his amendment, to Councilmember Brown's amendment, is that we remove the prohibition for brass knuckles for minors, and we maintain the stiffer penalties for those who use brass knuckles in an aggravated assault, or in an assault, period.
And Mayor, just for clarification, that would not be an amendment on mine. That would be a separate and alternate motion. I'm not inclined to change my.
Okay, very good. So that is my amendment that I'm calling for a vote on, which I believe if Councilmember Martineau understood, she seconded. But you can ask her again if you'd like.
Mayor, and actually, the mayor calls for the vote following the procedure. But I want to make sure, does the council understand what you're being asked to vote upon?
Yes, and Councilmember Bennings has a comment.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think I'm understanding, but I'm not hearing the wording correctly. Forgive me for being obtuse. I think that the original motion was to support legislation that was being proposed at the state to do one thing, and that was to, in support of a resolution or a possible law, to make use of, I'm sorry.
Possession.
Possession of the.
Mayor, might I?
I'm sorry.
I think I can clarify this for everyone.
If you could, please.
All right. I'll read my motion, and then, as a lifeline, I will throw the motion that I think Councilmember Padilla is trying to make. So my move, my motion is move to approve support for the Strike Everything Amendment offered to Senate Bill 1183 regarding brass knuckles, which would prohibit them, and our support would be contingent upon that prohibition of possession being applicable only to minors. Additionally, I would also ask that we support that same Senate Bill 1183, provided it would, or, and/or, it would enhance the penalties for the use of brass knuckles in the commission of a crime. And I think that Councilmember Padilla is all of that, except for the entire first half. His would be move to approve support for the Strike Everything Amendment offered to Senate Bill 1183 brass knuckles, so long as there was the amendment offered to the floor would only be for an enhancement of penalties for the use of brass knuckles in the commission of a crime.
Correct. Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying.
So I guess I would officially call for a vote on that. And do we need to re-clarify whether we have?
Again, I call for a vote. But I, so what you just said is supporting the bill with the.
I read my motion, and I presented language that Councilmember Padilla is trying to use. Mine includes an age-restricted possession. Councilmember Padilla's motion does not. Councilmember Padilla's motion is only to support Senate Bill 1183 so long as it enhances penalties for use of brass knuckles in the commission of a crime.
Okay. I apologize. Our town manager, did you have a comment? Nope.
Mayor and council, I think I was trying to clarify it for you, and that's what the council has done.
And were you finished, Councilmember Bennings? Okay. With that, I will call for a vote for Councilmember Padilla's alternative motion. The motion does fail five to two. With the failed motion, I will entertain a second, excuse me, the original motion, if you want to.
I don't need to do anything. You just need to call the vote.
Councilmember Padilla, did you have a comment?
Yes, I do. Thank you for.
Mayor, I had called the vote earlier.
So since I've been recognized, I'll just mention my comment prior to the vote, which is that the reason I will be a no vote on this is that I want my daughters and all victims, potential victims, to have all self-defense tools available to them to defend themselves. And for that reason, I will be voting no on this resolution. Thank you.
Please place your vote. I believe Councilmember Bennings was the original second. Second. That does pass five to two. Next, we will move on to the public hearing consent agenda. And with that, matters on our public hearing consent agenda are considered to be routine and generally enacted with one motion and one vote. I will now open the public hearing. Are there any public comments submitted by members of the public online, attending in person?
There are none, Mayor.
Thank you, Maria. With that, I will close the public hearing. And are there any items on the public hearing consent agenda that council or staff would like to remove? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
Move for approval of the public hearing consent agenda as published, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion, Councilmember Brown, a second, Councilmember Oliphant. Please place your vote. That does pass unanimously. Next on the agenda is public hearing, which we have none. Next item is items for discussion. And we have a presentation on the status of the State Route 24 extension that was approved by the fiscal year 2024 to 2025 state budget appropriation. And we have our intergovernmental relations director, Heather Wilkie, and our public works director, Mohammed Youssef, here to provide this presentation.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor, Vice Mayor, for the record. Heather Wilkie, intergovernmental relations director. Do also want to acknowledge the presence of State Representative Neil Carter with us this evening. And I think if it's the council's desire, he'd love to obviously make a comment, which I think is very applicable to some actions on this today at the state legislature as well. So just as a reminder, State Route 24 from Ellsworth to the Ironwood stretch today is in interim status that was completed in August of 2022. There's about approximately $120 million in Proposition 479 that would complete that permanent status with full interchanges at Signal Butte and Meridian Road. The extension of State Route 24, which is the purpose of the presentation this evening, stretches from Ironwood and in the Penale County Plan all the way to the US 60 there. So it's kind of the blue horizontal line that then transfers into the gold line on this particular map. It would cross over the CAAP Canal as well as the north-south planned freeway. That freeway has recently been renamed as the 505. And then ultimately to the US 60 there. For Queen Creek's purposes, we've really been focused on that Phase 1 stretch between Ironwood and the CAAP Canal. Senate Bill 1172, excuse me, yes, 1172 was passed by the Arizona Legislature and signed by the governor on May 11th of 2023. As a reminder, it appropriated $87.5 million to the town of Queen Creek in collaboration with Penale County to expend that particular funding. Just want to walk through a timeline, and bear with me as this is a bit lengthy in terms of the intergovernmental agreement actions that we've taken as the town in order to hopefully receive that particular funding, which is still outstanding to date. As I mentioned, the bill was signed in May of 2023. In June of 2023, the town received an initial standard intergovernmental agreement form from ADOT to appropriate that particular distribution to us. In July, the town sent back a revised intergovernmental agreement that better reflected the town's status as a funder and not an actual constructor of the State Route 24 extension, which would be the responsibility of ADOT, Yandor, Penale County, ultimately. This is a bit unique. ADOT is typically in the habit of having intergovernmental agreement projects that pass through legislative appropriations, where it's just a complete responsibility on behalf of the receiving entity to conduct the actual construction. In July of 2023, we also met with ADOT to review that particular IGA and why we were proposing the revisions. There was agreement in concept at that particular meeting. And then it's our understanding that sometime in August that ADOT transmitted the revised intergovernmental agreement to the governor's office for approval, since it did deviate from their standard format. Between September and November of last year, we did make several attempts to find out the status of that particular approval from the governor's office. And then on December 1st, we received notification from ADOT that they were rescinding that original intergovernmental agreement that they had offered to us back in June, and that the contract will now need ultimate review and approval by the Arizona Department of Administration. We're, we understand we're one of two outstanding projects that have not received their distribution. On December 1st, Mayor Wheatley sent a letter in response to that to the governor's office and the Arizona Department of Administration asking for expediting that particular review approval process as quickly as possible. Other members of the town council also sent letters in December of 2023. And then in early January, there was a joint letter that went from Mayor Wheatley, Mayor Giles with the city of Mesa, Mayor Wilson with the city of Apache Junction, and Supervisor Sertie in Penale County. So the state this year is facing an $835 million budget deficit. The governor released her executive budget proposal on January 12th of 2024. This is just sort of her starting point for negotiations with the legislature and in the budget process. That particular budget package contained a clawback, or what some refer to as an X appropriation, of 23 transportation projects listed here on the slide, totaling about $419 million, so about half of that deficit being made up by those transportation projects. And unfortunately, it did include a full clawback of our State Route 24 extension at the $87.5 million appropriation. Several consequences, obviously, with a funding delay and/or if that clawback were to take place and be accepted by the legislature in this year's state budget package. Obviously, we have a continued rapid population growth in the southeast valley here. Proposition 479 that I mentioned has some timing and funding considerations for construction readiness in January of 2025, where the town was hoping to line up the Ironwood interchange in particular with those efforts. Obviously, we have ongoing economic development need on the state trust land and then potential impacts to access and regional traffic surrounding LG Energy Solutions. And Mohammed's going to go in a bit more detail with respect to those consequences as well.
Thank you, Heather.
Thanks, Heather. Mayor Wheatley, council, good evening. For the record, Mohammed Youssef, public works director. As you know, this area has exponential growth. You know, according to MAG number, this is a population for the area of Queen Creek, Centane, and Florence. There's almost 200,000 residents as of last year, 2023, as you see here There's almost 200,000 resident as of last year, 2023, as you see here. Of Queen Creek, Santan Valley, and Florence. And if-